Good evening and welcome to this evening. Monday, December 10th. We are here for the special Truth in Taxation meeting that we're required to hold by statute. And our Director of Business Affairs, Sandy Saline, will give a brief presentation. We'll see if there's any members of the public who wish to comment. And if not, we will adjourn for our regular seven o'clock meeting. So Sandy.
Thank you, Jim. And as Jim said, we're here to go through the Truth in Taxation hearing for taxes payable in 2013. And our agenda for the hearing includes information on the district budget, information on the district's proposed tax levy for taxes payable in 2013. And we have to leave room for comments and questions to the public. And why that's happening, I don't know. First, we're going to go through the district budgets for fiscal year 13, which is the current year. And I know it's hard to see on the bottom there, but hopefully the viewing audience can see it on the television. But looking down, I'm not going to go through all of the line items, but looking down for the general fund, the total general fund budgets are $51,480,793. The general fund unreserved budgets are $47,868,825. And the expenditure budgets for fiscal year 2013 for the general fund is a total of $51,781,894, with the general fund unreserved expenditure budgets of $48,796,179. And looking at the bottom, you can go through the different general fund balances that we have the audited fund balances for fiscal year 2012, since we did approve the audit this last board meeting. And looking at the unreserved, unassigned, it's at 3.7 million. The assigned is at 2.4 million. And I'll let you go down and look at the several unreserved accounts and required accounts that we have to have according to the counting standards. And for the food service fund, community ed fund, as well as the debt service and technology fund, it's as follows. I won't go through them again, but I'll let you view them. And if there's any questions, I certainly can answer any questions. The bond projects, we do anticipate spending them down for the current fiscal year. We did have some rollover fund balance, which we are going to be spending this current But all of them are pretty much in line with what we had last year. And looking at it from a graphical standpoint, the general fund revenue, which we are including capital, the majority of our revenue comes from state aids, which is at 66, almost 67%. Property taxes comprises of the next most amount that we receive, which is close to 25%. And then federal aids comes in third, which is close to 6%. And 3%, close to 3% comes from other revenue, such as ticket sales and et cetera, local For the general fund expenditures for fiscal year 2013, these are broken down by program, which is a requirement that we have to report through the Truth in Taxation. And the majority of the expenditures, 51%, consists of regular instruction. Special ed is 17%. And I'm not going to go through all of them, but 5% of regular instruction and vocational instruction, or I'm sorry, vocational instruction consists of the next largest amount of expenditures. Food service revenues, the majority of food service revenues comes from local sales amounts, which is 49%. Second, federal aids consist of 48%. And other local, or state aids consist of 3%. And community services also, one of those funds that consists of mostly local revenue sources, and 71% of the revenue comes from local revenue sources. 15% comes from state aid, and 14% comes from property taxes. And next, we're going to go through the proposed property taxes for payable 2013, which is actually next year's revenue for the school district in fiscal year 2014. And looking at this graph, this is a graph that I show every year to show what is voter approved versus non-voter approved taxes that we will be approving for payable 2013. And the voter approved consists of 77% of the taxes, whereas the non-voter approved, which is basically mandated by the state, is approved for 23%.
Where does the tech levy fall into this at all? Are you just talking about?
That's voter approved.
You're including that in the, okay.
Mm-hmm. The referendum and the tech levy is included in that. And I'm not going to go through all of these different categorical levies, but I'm just going to highlight some of the changes, the big changes that took place, which contributes to some of our decreases, as well as some of the increases which offset the decrease that overall. Operating referendum actually went up slightly by 2.55%, and that's mainly due to adjustments from prior years, because basically when we levy for the operating referendum, we use estimates of resident pupil units, which is what it's based upon. And as they find out what the resident pupil units actually are, we actually get adjustments in years to come down the line. So we actually underestimated slightly for the resident pupil units. For the integration, or I'm sorry, the reemployment levy, we actually had an increased adjustment last year for payable 2012, and a decreased adjustment for 2013. And reemployment levy is based on actual expenditures. You base it again on estimates during the levy process, but then it's adjusted for the actual expenditures that come into play. The big one that took place in the general fund was the health and safety. We had a lot of things going on in payable 2012, which we actually estimated for projects, because with the health and safety levy, you estimate projects, but if their projects aren't completed, you actually have adjustment for the next year for those projects that aren't completed and the revenue that you received for them. So that's kind of what happened this year, is our levy was brought down considerably, because we actually didn't do some of those projects that we estimated for payable 2012. So we had a pretty good sized decrease because of that. Tax increment financing is something that is a flow-through for the district. We actually get revenue from the city with a check, but we actually pay it out through the levy system, certification system, to the taxpayers. And we had a slight decrease of tax increment financing due to that. Community ed stayed pretty stable as far as the increases and decreases. There was a slight decrease in the school age care, and again, that's one of those levy items that's based on actual expenditures, and we're adjusting for the prior year. The debt service, we had an increase in our debt service excess. And our debt service excess is basically, what we levy for is the principal and interest, but we're also able to levy for 5% over that principal and interest payments for our debt service. And as those 5% keep on accruing, eventually they take a look at your fund balance and take some of that back. And that's basically what the debt service excess did this year. They increased that decrease to our debt service to take some of that money back that we overlevied. Looking at the grand total then, we have a decrease actually in our overall proposed levy payable 2013 from the prior year of $877,512, which is an overall decrease of And with that, I'll take any questions and comments anyone may have.
All right. Is there anyone on the board who has any questions or comments?
I just want to repeat what I understood the closing comment to be, which is, after you consider all of what you've said, the net effect is a decrease in what the school's share of the taxes is by, I think you said 3.85%?
That's correct.
Okay.
All right. And then I'll open it up to the public. If there's any questions or comments, which is why we have this meeting, but seeing none, I guess I would entertain a motion for adjournment for this portion of our meeting. Moved by Larry, seconded by Bruce. All those in favor say aye. Aye, we are adjourned until seven o'clock. Good evening. Welcome to Monday, December 10th, School Board meeting. The good news is, is that we had Truth in Taxation, and we had meetings before that, so we all are here now on time, which might not have happened. But we were able to make it work through technology. Cindy, thank you. We were able to conference in and have a meeting and be productive anyhow before, so that worked out well. On the agenda this evening is our spotlight. We have two TIES Teachers of the Year, who have obviously run into some similar situations, traffic situations, so we will move that on to when they are available and they are here, so they can hear all the good things about them, as we honor them, the two teachers tonight. Then we have our approval of agenda, open forum, superintendent's report, discussion items. We have international student travel for the High School Orchestra in 2014. We have the Middle School International Baccalaureate Middle Years Program update, Aquila Elementary School Report, American Indian Committee update. We have freight rail discussion. We have our final levy certification. And we have a report on our superintendent evaluation. We have our consent agenda, and then a number of things on our action agenda. We have the final levy certification approval. We have international student travel approval. We have an approval of our letter for desired mitigation with respect to the freight rail. We have a Community Education Advisory Council member appointment. We have our American Indian Resolution approval. And we have approval for a third amendment to the Elliott Purchase Agreement, followed by communications and transmittals, followed by adjournment, followed by breakfast. So with that, I would entertain a motion for approval of tonight's agenda. Moved by Larry. Seconded by Ken. Any comments? All in favor say aye. Aye, opposed. That passes 7-0. Okay. All right. We will postpone Spotlight TIES Teacher of the Year award until we can fit it in as we go along. And with that, we have open forum. Is there anyone here who wants to speak on a non-agenda item to the board? Or an agenda item? All right. Hearing or seeing none, we will move on to the superintendent's report.
Well, it certainly is a snowy day out there, and it's fun, but it's treacherous at the same time. First, I would like to let the community know and the school board know is that I have support from principals to create a task force after we've been hearing about space needs. And then I also have board members who say, well, what about program needs? And so this is going to meet in January with a recommendation to me by the end of February. Sandy Saline, our business manager, will facilitate that, along with Paul Apelkowsky. It will consist of an elementary principal from every school, a parent, and a teacher. And so they will convene. We will have a charge statement ready to go, and we'll be working with the principals. But I wanted to let the board know that as we look at what are the issues, what are the needs, our programming needs that we currently have, to make some recommendations to all of us. And then the second, we continue work on our strategic plan. And under Strategy Three, one of our results is to meet the needs of our at-risk preschoolers. And one of our first challenges was to identify, well, what is an at-risk preschooler? What do they need? And so we have Lisa Green, and then Amy is here to present to us tonight regarding this result that we've been working on. And thanks to both of you for coming this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Bowers, members of the board. I'd like to introduce Amy Sussman-Stilman. She is the co-director for the Center for Early Educational Development at the University of Minnesota, and a very active parent here in St. Louis Park. And as you'll recall, she did present last spring on the CAREI grant, and she's here tonight to do a little follow-up to that grant. So here she is.
Thank you for letting me speak tonight, and I know you have a lot of things on your agenda, so I will be short and sweet. But again, to follow up on what the superintendent and Lisa just said, this is about some work that addresses District Strategy Three and Result One, which is that the percentage of high-need preschoolers participating in readiness programs is increasing annually. So last year, as you know, we reported on the findings of two surveys that we did, a community survey and a waitlist survey, that led us to this particular action step of wanting to inform the community of the need for early childhood education and access issues in St. Louis Park. Because the results of the surveys pointed to parents who were unable to access services through community ed, who were concerned about cost, transportation, or who didn't know about program options. And also that programs were filled, and there was a waitlist, that meant that there was, for a large percentage of children, no preschool experiences prior to kindergarten entry. And so today, what I want to do is just talk a little bit about what things that are going on in Minnesota, and have the opportunity to have you say, yes, we should go ahead and do some more publicizing of these findings, and work on educating the community around the need for access. So in Minnesota, in early childhood, last December, the state was awarded $48 million for the Race to the Top Early Learning Challenge Grant. And that has a number of early childhood components to it, specifically to improve access and quality. One is ParentAware, the Quality Rating and Improvement System. And I know that Lisa and Mary Jubarian and others in early care and education are working on moving St. Louis Park programs into ParentAware, which helps to increase options for professional development, and also would allow students potentially the option to have scholarships that they could bring into the district. So the early childhood scholarships are also a component of ParentAware, and that's also an option that's being entertained statewide. And the third is that there are issues that will be entertained, like a statewide kindergarten readiness assessment. And it's important for the district, I think, to be prepared to address these issues. The second is that there's this Mini Minds campaign that's going on, that some of you may have heard about, but you can easily Google mini minds dot com. And essentially, this is a statewide campaign. They're working to get this into the governor's budget to increase public funding for access to high-quality early care and education. All students, regardless of where they live, would be eligible for scholarships if they are 185% or below the poverty rate, that they could then use to pick high-quality early care and education. And the goal is to improve access to quality care, but you also have to make sure you have quality care available. The third is that things are starting to happen in St. Louis Park as well to address the issue. One is that Twin West Chamber of Commerce Foundation just funded a program called Kids Work for the last three years, which is an early childhood program of the Meadowbrook Collaborative. I think they gave $30,000 over the next three years to have an early childhood class that kind of mirrors their after-school programming. And Tower Light, that new facility that's right on the corner of 36th and whatever, Wooddale, is now opening an intergenerational daycare facility this winter. And so there are options. I think there's just a lot starting to happen around this issue. So essentially, what I guess we'd like to ask here is for Strategy Three, Result One, action step is to be able to move forward with informing the community of the need for early childhood education and access. We started last week with the Legislative Breakfast, which I thought went really well. Tom Harmoning was very, very interested in hearing about this, and asked a lot of great questions about what are things to learn more about the status. So that, whoops. So that's, I guess, the request and the discussion here tonight. So thank you.
Are there any questions? Or do you have more to add, Lisa?
Nope.
So.
No questions.
Well, I was just wondering, so you're looking for our guidance and requesting that, hey, go ahead and get information out. Is there?
Right.
Is there a cost component, or anything more? Okay. Because this is an important issue to us, and it is a part of our strategic plan. And we appreciate your efforts, and this is good stuff. This is great. So, Julie.
Not really a question, but I just heard a presentation on Race to the Top and a discussion of ParentAware last week, so I intended to ask if we were going to participate, because it sounds beneficial, particularly to the students and their families. So I'm just glad, you know, I didn't ever ask later, I got the materials with the presentation. So anyways, I'm glad we're participating in that. It sounds important.
Just curious, on the new class at Meadowbrook, how's the attendance been? I mean, is that, this is the first year, obviously, of the grant?
Yes. And it's like Amy said, it's at the same time as their after-school targeted services class, so they can go with their older siblings. And I think right now, they have like 10 kids who are coming regularly. It just started in September or October, so they're building their attendance, but so far, it's going really well.
Great. Well, thank you very much, Amy and Lisa. Appreciate it, and keep us posted.
Thank you.
Thanks again for your good work, and I agree that the Legislative Breakfast that you held last week was just wonderful. I liked how that everyone is collaborating and working together to meet the needs of all the students. And we're breaking down some of those silos, as far as making sure that we're providing for at-risk kids. So thanks again to both of you.
Thank you. We're really working hard on that.
Finally, I'd like to conclude my report tonight with thanking our bus company. I did have a call from head of transportation last evening to talk about the weather, and I would like to thank them for ensuring the safety of our students to and from school today. So thanks again.
All right. Moving on to discussion items. The first item is international student travel for the High School Orchestra. Looks like our high school principal, Rob Metz, will be presenting on that issue.
Good evening, Dr. Bowers and board members. I'm here tonight joined by Miriam Edgar. She is our orchestra director. And we are here because we're seeking approval and permission to take an international trip next year, the spring of 2014, to London and Paris. Our orchestra would like to take that trip. So we're quite a ways out, but the students are already beginning their fundraising, and so we wanted to come here and seek your permission. I'll give a little bit of background. The past six years, we have not taken a large group of students on international trips. We have had some international trips, but they've been organized through outside organizations and outside touring companies. For example, last year, our Spanish students went to Spain, but that was not technically our trip. So this is the first time in the last six years that we've taken a large group of our students out of the country, and that's why we're here tonight. So Miriam is going to say a little bit more about the trip, and then we'll be happy to answer questions.
Good evening. Sorry, I'm a little short, so I'm just going to bend this down a little bit. I'm Miriam Edgar. I am the seventh through 12th grade orchestra director in the district. And a little bit about this trip is, we have had this proposal made up through performance tours. They're actually the tour company that the choir, the band, and the orchestra have used even before I was actually hired in the district. I've actually been on two of their tours. We went to New York as an orchestra two years ago. We actually went with this tour company. It was fantastic. Last year, I also had the honor of going as the assistant director on the band trip to San Francisco. It was also wonderful. The actual executive of the company came with us on the trip himself, and was our actual, like, personal tour guide. So they really, really plan out their trips well. Anyways, a little bit about this. We had this proposal made up in January of 2011, and then last fall, we actually had the, what would have been last year's seventh through 11th grade parents, which would be this year's eighth grade through 12th grade parents. We actually held a meeting, and we presented the proposals and our options, and we actually gave them a form where parents could fill out feedback on where we wanted the next trip to go. We also asked the same feedback from students. And what we heard from that is that the most popular trip was the London-Paris trip. There were also domestic trips also listed. And then the other thing that we heard is that parents and students wanted to travel in 2014 to allow us the most time so that we could fundraise. We have been fundraising. We actually have raised $9,727 as of today, between individual fundraisers, and we actually had a Halloween benefit concert about a month and a half ago. We have two more benefit concerts coming up, and we still have more individual fundraisers, which include things like cookie dough and happenings books, such stuff like that. So, yes. Also, on the proposal, the trip was, we made it for 2013, just because in 2011, we weren't sure yet which year parents and students would prefer us to travel. So while we're there, we would have the opportunity to not only see professionals perform, but we ourselves would also be able to perform. We, just as an example, when we went to New York, we actually got to perform both with the high school there. We also got to perform in a Juilliard masterclass, which students can now include on their resume. It really, it was a life-altering experience. Every student that attended that trip in New York is now post-secondary involved in some form of music, whether or not they are a music major. So I think these trips are very powerful. So, thank you.
Question, Julie.
Questions, and maybe three, since you just.
Sure.
Can I ask them all in a row? Okay. The first one is just, on your cover sheet, it says the orchestra is growing in numbers.
Yes.
And as the parent of a former cellist in the orchestra, I'm just thrilled to hear that. What kind of numbers are we up to?
Thanks. We are currently at 63 students. We have a few students that are hoping to come back next semester, and then actually next year, we are estimated to have between 75 and 90 students, so.
Is that two sections or three sections?
We're two sections right now. And actually, our room is large enough to accommodate two sections still, even if we are at 90. So.
Could I say, Julie, three years ago, it was 35. That was the bottom, and now we're working our way back up.
Yeah. That's fantastic.
Thank you.
An enormous amount of credit goes to you for making that happen.
Thank you.
So that's wonderful. But then your last comment was that all of the people on the trip, all of the students are involved in post-secondary music experiences in some way. Are you keeping track or keeping in touch with all the students?
Yes. And actually, we have an alumni concert, I'll put in a little plug, on December 20th. It used to be very big when I was a student here, and we're kind of bringing it back. But students that have graduated over the last few years are starting to come back and perform with us, even though they might be performing with like a college group, they come back and play with us in the concert, and it's really exciting to see them and hear them and watch that growth even after they've graduated, so.
Well, I'll spread that to the class of 2009.
Thanks.
And then my other substantive question, just from the experiences on those trips, my daughter did San Francisco trips, and everybody's instruments landed just fine.
Yes.
But I remember hearing, I think it was a year after that, you know, they've had issues with instruments.
Yep.
And just going on an international trip raises that concern even more.
And actually, that's something that we've been talking with the tour company about. I know, depending on where we're performing, sometimes there are instruments available for us to actually rent just for like a day. That would be my personal choice with an international trip. For New York, it was a little bit hard to get our instruments there. We did pack them in bubble wrap, and I mean, we checked them before we left and after we left. But it is something that we are definitely looking into for, if it's possible to rent. I think it would be easier, especially with an international trip. So, yeah. One other thing too on that, when we did travel, I know students who did not have insurance on their instruments, we did allow them to take a school instrument, because those instruments are insured. So that helped us with that, too. So, yeah.
When you're in Paris, I have a great restaurant for you.
Okay.
But besides that, I'm interested in how you set up the performances, because it was something I was very interested in, because when you mentioned Juilliard, and they can use that on their resume, what a great opportunity that is.
It was amazing.
And then to have international performance experience for these kids would be fantastic on their college resume. So however, I don't know whether the performance tour sets it up, or you set it up, but in the Sorbonne or somewhere in London, no good restaurants in London, though. But Paris will be great, and somewhere to perform, I think, would be wonderful.
Yeah. Well, and you know, the way it kind of works is, it depends on what's available when we travel, you know, depending on our dates. I know when we traveled in New York, it was a great time, because it was springtime. The Juilliard masterclass literally like fell in our lap. I actually like dropped the phone when they called to tell me that we had been offered a position at Juilliard for a masterclass. It was just. we had been offered a position at Juilliard for a masterclass. It was just fantastic. And Michael Pelleci, the man who is in charge of this company, he actually has done several tours with other school groups, including local groups. So he has a lot of connections with where's the best place to perform for the time of year that we're going to be there. I know in the past, you know, if students have like a cousin or a relative or something in a city or an area, we try to maybe kind of go to that area. You know, I know that's been done in the past too. So there's a lot of flexibility. And, you know, we did like a school exchange too, which was really nice. I think Michael just kind of sent out an email and said, hey, who wants to host an orchestra? And we, you know, we got a couple of people that were available, and we picked the one that worked best for us with our location and time, so, yeah.
I think this is a very exciting opportunity for the students. My, so, my questions are, how many students are you anticipating, and how are you selecting? And the materials we have make it look like thirty-five students with three chaperones. So the questions really are, how many students, how do you select them? Do the seniors get first options, or the lead cellists, or how do you do that? And how are you ensuring supervision and...
Yep.
Because one person who screws up can hurt everybody.
Right, right. First of all, for numbers, we just had to kind of guesstimate how many students would be going on the trip, so we picked thirty-five kind of as a middle number. I think it'll probably be at least thirty. I think it could be as much as fifty, depending on, you know, it kind of depends on who's in orchestra next year. And then, and I think too, like, this has been on the radar now since last year, so there are, there's a lot of motivation with that incoming eighth grade class that'll be ninth graders next year. As for supervision, the district does have a rule of one to eight for chaperones, two students. We've always had at least one to eight. This is, this'll actually be our fifth trip next year that we've taken. I know when we went to New York, we actually had so much help with us that we, I think we had, it was about one to five, one to six, which was really nice, because when we, you know, when we broke out into groups, like at Times Square, it was easier to have the smaller groups because more people could go where they wanted to go. And I personally feel that as many chaperones that want to come, we should take them, because just the more supervision we have, the easier everything will be. So, and in the past, we have not had a problem getting chaperones, so...
Do we anticipate we'll have enough fundraising that anyone who wants to go will be able to go?
That's a good question. You know, we've been offering a lot of individual fundraisers as well as the benefit concerts. The benefit concerts, what we've been doing, at least what we did for the New York trip, is we kind of collected it, and then we had students apply for scholarships. There's also the Friends of the Art Scholarship that they have been so gracious, or I should say, I have been so gracious to them. They have really helped out students in the past as well. I know with the benefit concerts too, we did actually, I think we offered five $500 scholarships on the last trip that we went on, which helped students who, you know, just, you know, whether they were working and, you know, fundraising, just couldn't get there, they could get that help. And, you know, one of the things too with this trip is, we've tried to give as much time as possible for families and students to plan that want to go, just because, you know, we realize this is, you know, a lot of money, and we don't want there to be a financial barrier. For New York, any student that wanted to go, we were able to find a way to make it work for them to go. So, and I should also say too, that in the event that this trip does not work out, we do have a backup trip planned, and that is for San Francisco. So if this doesn't work out, we still have an option. So I feel pretty positive about this though right now, so...
Great, great experience. Joe?
This sounds great. It's more of a, maybe a question for the board, since I'm kind of new to this process. So what is it that will be brought to us in terms of approval? I mean, we just talked about the number of students and the location. I mean, are we saying something pretty broad in terms of orchestra's trip in 2014, or is it more specific? And if things deviate from that, it gets brought to us again? If it changes to San Francisco, or if it changes the number of students? How does, how does that work?
Cindy, I know we have a board policy on...
We do have a board policy. It's named Field Trips. Sorry, I don't have the number with me right now, but it does say if there's international travel, that the board must give approval.
Yep, which is why we're here.
So we have to, that's why they must come to us for our approval, and why we ask the good questions, like is there insurance, and, you know, all that good stuff, so...
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to make sure...
I don't think it'll come back.
If we're limiting, I mean, if we're saying we approve this up to thirty-five people, or, but we're not, we're saying it's more of a broad approving the orchestra trip. Thank you.
All right, Julie?
Just last question.
Yeah.
If alumni are back on the twentieth, and we're interested in playing, how do they find out more?
Yeah, if they want to either email me, or call me, or Facebook me, I can get them a letter out to them as soon as tomorrow, so. And I've got packets of music all ready to go if they would like to play. And just because they're an alumni and they want to come to the concert, they don't have to play with us. They can just be there too. We just like to have them there.
You mentioned how many are already lined up?
Yeah, we have nineteen alumni already, all the way from the class of nineteen-seventy up until graduates from last year. And George Klobuchar, who is the first orchestra director in St. Louis Park who founded our program, is actually going to also be present because it's our fiftieth anniversary this year of our program, so...
Great, well, great. Congratulations. Sounds like a lot of excitement, so that's great.
Thank you.
Oh, Nancy?
I do want you to give some plugs to the holiday concerts that are coming up, because I know they're happening, and this is our last board meeting, and people watch at home. So your alumni concert includes current students, and that's December twentieth. At what time and where?
Yep, it's at 7:00 PM. It's down in the auditorium, and we're going to play everything from Mozart to, we're actually playing a piece that was written by an alumni from nineteen eighty-one, whose son is now in the orchestra, so huge eclectic mix. It'll be wonderful, so...
And Rob, you may not know off the top, and if you don't, people can look online, but are there choir concerts or other concerts happening?
Yes, choir's tomorrow night, December eleventh. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Great. All right, I think we'll use this time now to jump back to the spotlight, and I'll call Rob Metz and Corey Maslowsky.
Good evening. I'm Corey Maslowsky, proud principal of Park Spanish Immersion School, and with me is Mr. Metz, and we'd like to recognize the outstanding work of two St. Louis Park teachers with their integration of technology. They've received the TIEZ Exceptional Teacher Award, an award which recognizes educators who model best practices in using technology in the classroom and engaging students in learning. They'll also be honored tomorrow at the TIEZ Conference downtown. So I'd ask Kara to come forward. Kara Shite is always looking for new tools to transform and enhance her work with students and families. She's a fourth grade teacher at our school. I asked a few of our students today at recess what they enjoyed most about her class. I received responses such as, she's really nice, she makes us want to learn more, and she has fun ways to teach us, and that she does. She has daily differentiated lesson plans to motivate students at their interest level and ability level. She has new activities and always coming up with different activities to push student learning. Several years ago, she piloted the smartboards. She has always been a firm believer in the use of computer labs to facilitate student learning, not to use technology for technology's sake, but to integrate it with student learning. Lately, she's been hooked on the iPads for writing, researching, math activities, and poetry, and she even found, found an app a few weeks ago called Auto Wrap, which the kids quite enjoyed. And by the way, my father did it at Thanksgiving also. And she has also been using communication to keep parents engaged in what's going on in the classroom, through regular bi-weekly e-blass to families to let them know what's been going on and what's coming up, using the website and using Parent Portal. We've been dabbling with that in fourth grade this year, which is part of our Power School, to notify parents as far as what homework pieces are missing and what they may have received on a recent quiz or test. At Park Spanish Immersion School in St. Louis Park, Kara Shite has been a leader in implementing innovation. It's my pleasure to partner with her daily on behalf of our kids.
And I have the pleasure of calling up Joy Espolt. We have a Spanish connection here because Joy is a Spanish teacher at the high school. She does a tremendous job, teaches Spanish II, IV, and V, is a great team member, really has helped us solidify our Spanish curriculum here at the high school, and helped plan and take our students on a Spanish trip last summer. But the reason she's here tonight is she is a real leader in the use of technology. Just a couple of things that she does. She teaches a hybrid class, her Spanish V class. So a hybrid class is like a college class. They don't meet every day. When they're not meeting, she's putting their assignments on a Moodle site and keeping track of all their work as they're completing it away from school. It's a really good way for our high school students to get used to what college is going to be like. She has a tremendous website and does all kinds of other things, too many to mention, but the one that I was really impressed with is how she's using iPads in these Spanish classes, where students are using them as a recorder, recording their own voices as they're speaking, going back and correcting their own grammar, their own syntax, all of their own errors, and then re-recording, and then going back and doing it again, and then re-recording. And I think she's finding some new and creative ways to really boost language development faster than we've ever done before. So an outstanding teacher, an outstanding person, Joy Espolt.
It's great. So thanks so much. And when we go off for our tech levy, it's good to have stories like this, so thank you. All right, next, moving back to our discussion items, we will do the Middle School International Baccalaureate Middle Years Program update. Les Bork and team.
Thank you, Jim. We're actually going to be doing the Coordinated Middle School update tonight.
Yes, thank you. I'm sorry, we have it on our agenda, I guess, as the Middle School International Baccalaureate, but...
Good evening.
Thank you.
Dr. Bowers and school board. I want to, first of all, start out by thanking you for inviting us to come here this evening to talk about something that's very important to us. Gentlemen, to my right is Jason Bowle, a colleague, a friend, ex-math teacher, and now assistant principal at the junior high. We're going to be talking this evening about some things, maybe at the three-thousand-foot level, and then taking it all the way down to the ground level. We're excited this evening to really talk about the work that we've done for the past two years about a coordinated middle school. To give you a little bit of background, we think we need to go back to the year of 2010. And in that year, you folks in February of that year decided to close the school and send three-hundred-and-thirty students onto the junior high, or middle school, as we call it today. We combined the students, and we continued to offer an elementary program. We call it affectionately a sidecar sixth grade, but we know that that isn't really where we want to be. We want to move to a sixth, seventh, eighth coordinated school. So for the past two years, we've worked with McCrell, Think Tank out of Colorado, the Minnesota Department of Education, and our transition, our school transition team, to develop what you're going to be hearing about this evening. Here are a few highlights. This summer, we developed through Strategy Two Result Four the following action plans. The first one, which is a key one, is really moving to change our sixth grade teachers from teaching as elementary teachers to content specialists. We've developed a timeline, and we're looking to start this fall, if approved, them teaching in their specific content areas. On the next page...
Les, just a quick question about that, because how does that work with licensure?
Thank you.
Is that...
Yes, that's part of what we're working on. We're looking, we've met with the teachers, and we're looking to, this fall, have them teach in two specific subject areas. In three years, they will make a decision, the content area that they want to be licensed in.
So they have to actually get that next license then?
In three years. They'll have three years to get a content license. But this coming fall, we'll look to have them teach in two specific subject areas, and that gets around the elementary licensure issue.
I have a question for you, Les.
Yes.
So would, I understand that they would have three years to get this certificate?
Yes.
They return to school to get those certificates, right?
Correct.
Or will it just be... okay.
We have a few teachers that are licensed five through eight, but the reality is, most will have to go back to get a content-specific license, usually in either language arts, math, social studies, or science.
And I know this is putting the card a little bit forward here, but would you guys propose a mentoring program or something for them to help them through those?
We've already started out meeting as an entire group, and then we've met with the teachers one-on-one to see what they would like to teach, and see how that matches with what we'd like them to teach. So we've already started that process and look to continue that throughout the next three years. You ask good questions. Thank you. The next two areas that I want to talk about is really talking about expanding remediation and expanding elective offerings for all students. And this is a key that really we're going to be hammering on, really, throughout the course of our presentation. So today, we have a pretty standardized program, grade six, grade seven, grade eight. And really what we're proposing is for our students that are on grade level, I want to say that again, our students that are on grade level, we're proposing to give them a much deeper and broader breadth of experience by giving them control over some of the electives they wish to take. For our students who need remediation, meaning they're one or more grade levels behind, we're intending to give them more in-depth study in that area as well. Two areas that we're talking about, math and language arts. Third area that we talked about, that we've already discussed this evening, is the International Baccalaureate Program. Anything that we do must be compliant with NYPD, Middle Years Program, International Baccalaureate Program. Meeting dates, I'm not going to cover all of these, but I know that the school board and community really likes to see that we've touched base with our constituency. So I want to highlight all the staff meetings we've held, the department chair meetings that we've had, meetings we've had with Dr. Bowers and district office. Front office, we have our Site Council president here, as well as our Site Council Committee has been duly informed. Our cabinet, and finally, we'll be meeting on December seventeenth with representatives from the high school. Before I turn this over and Jason really share with you the logistics of the student schedule for both sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, I really want to talk about the elective opportunities, make sure you understand that, and when you do, it'll make more sense when you look at a student's schedule. So today, our students must take either a band or a visual arts, band and visual arts, excuse me. In our new system, students could take band and exploring music, band or choir. Our students could take two world languages as well. My mouth is getting a little dry. I'm sorry. Could take two world languages as well. I don't know other schools that offer that opportunity. You will notice there are the Advanced Science, the Advanced Humanities, Advanced Communication. None of those courses we offer today. We also will be offering a study and a structured study as well. So all of these opportunities will be available to our students in grades six, seven, and eight. And now on to, what does the schedule look like?
Before you go, Les, just a quick question on that. So are you saying, could you take Advanced Communications, or would there be courses within that, so you could take one in sixth, one in seventh, one in eighth? Or are you saying you'd have a course in Advanced Communications for sixth, seventh, and eighth graders combined?
Yeah, thank you. Well, Jim, you know that what our motto is, is under-promise and over-deliver. So what we're looking at trying, what we're eventually wanting to do is offering accelerated or advanced course... or advanced course in sixth grade, in seventh grade, and in eighth grade. We, we may not be able to start out and offer all of these courses in every grade, but our intent is to really be able to offer this acceleration and this advancement in all of these grade levels. In the future, we may look at multi-age classrooms as well, but not to begin with.
I got a question to that then, Les. Um, so to initially, you're saying that you're, you want to ideally have an advanced program for each of the grades, correct? And if they're not able to fill out those classes, you won't offer that advancement, right?
Well, thank you. You know, you have to, it has to make sense economically, so we have to be able to fill these classes. So we anticipate that a minimum class size of somewhere around 27, 28 need to occur in order to offer that class. And so yes, for example, if we had 14 in advanced communication, we wouldn't offer that course. We would really drop to the second choice that that student made.
Okay. So um, if that were to happen, first years, would you entertain the thought of combining the classes at that point? Or would you just not offer the advancement for the sixth grade kids or?
Well, we have to, thank you. We have to look at scope and sequence and what we're trying to do. So we have the luxury in our first year that for our seventh and eighth grade students, we can offer a class that those students can take jointly. Now, I don't call that a multi-age class because in reality, we're not scoping, scope and sequencing to something else. The eighth graders will be gone. So we really have a scheduling luxury our first year of being able to, to schedule seventh and eighth grade students together. See, see what I'm saying? Because then we don't have to worry about, what are we going to offer those students the next year?
Good evening, everybody. So I'm going to kind of take you through um grade level by grade level, our, our proposed schedule. So sixth grade here, if you kind of look at our, at our table, you've got the class period potentially that it would be, the subject that we're talking about, how many sections we're projected to have for next year, and then the corresponding FTE cost that that would be as far as the number of teachers. This does, as let's say falls under, meaning the NYPD requirements. And uh, one of the things that, that I personally like is it really gives kids whatever they essentially would need. So if someone's at grade level, you've got multiple choices for, for different classes. And if you're below grade level, math and reading, it gives you more time on task in that area that you're behind in. So I'm just going to kind of take you through here. Hours two, three, four, five. The verbiage that we're using is all NYPD vocabulary, so language A, math, humanities as social studies, and science. You'll see that those are, are common in sixth, seventh, and eighth grades, those classes would happen every day. Um, under the sections for humanities, science, you'll notice that we have our classic program and our ESP program. We are keeping um the recommendations of the ESP task force that met last year. So in sixth grade, our ESP students would have three classes in Spanish. And in seventh and eighth grade, they would continue to have two, which is what we've currently had, have had for, for a number of years. If you go to hours six A, our proposal is that all students will have a performing fine arts, which would be a music selection. And we would also be requiring in hour six B, all of our students to take a visual arts as well, and require both of those in sixth grade. Currently, this is a, quite a big add to our sixth grade. Currently, we have what we call an arts block where you have to choose between art or music, and you only get one of those classes in sixth grade. If you look at seven A, um, currently our sixth graders only get Spanish, there is no choice in terms of language. NYPD requires that either you mandate you have one language throughout your, your program, or if you do offer choice, you have to offer it the first year of your program. So we would have to offer, if we want to continue to offer French, Spanish, and German, we'd have to offer it starting in sixth grade and offer it sixth, seventh, and eighth. We couldn't like offer Spanish only in sixth and then offer choice in seventh grade.
So is that, that's dictated by, that's dictated by uh?
International Baccalaureate Program.
So we're out of, so this year, we're out of compliance, or how does that affect our?
Well, we're still, we're still a candidate, candidate status. So when we would be authorized, we would have to meet that requirement at that time, which is another full year out.
So this is something that we, we're going to have to add if we're going to be?
Correct. Mm-hmm. To be, to be authorized, that would have to happen. Mm-hmm.
But it's not necessarily an FTE add, it's a choice add.
But you were saying there was an, there was an option there. Can you take us through what got you to the option of going towards offering, or not going towards, but continuing to offer um multiple languages versus focusing on one?
Yep. Do you want to take that?
Or was that never on the table?
Well, if, if we would make that decision, that would have implications nine, 12, most likely as well. But. Thanks. So our proposal is, is language B would be offered every other day for our classic kids. For our ESP kids, language arts happens every day. You'll see that that happens seven A and seven B. So our classic kids who get world language every other day will get a writing class in addition every other day. And that's where you see seven B has classic-only English writing, and then the ESP language arts happens both seven A and seven B. If you go down to eight A, FIED for everybody, every other day. And then the very bottom, eight B, um, sixth graders will get one elective choice. And that goes back to the list on the previous slide that, that Les talked about, different courses and offerings that, that we'd have. That, that'd be for kids that would not require remediation in either math or reading. If you would need remediation in math or reading, to provide more time on task in that skill area, you would not get your elective, you would instead get extra time on math or extra time on reading.
And under that schedule, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Larry.
I was just going to ask, I mean, are you, you're not required to take a language? You just have that in here as, or are you required to take a language?
You are required to take a language, every other day language.
Okay.
You could take two.
Right.
I don't know any other middle schools around us that would allow a student to take, let's say, German and French.
So you're required to take a language, you're required to take English writing? Those, those, if you're, if you're in the classic program, those are requirements every other day?
Yes.
Okay.
And part of that, currently our sixth graders um get, get writing every day if you're in the classic program. So it's actually, we're trying to save as much of that writing time as possible.
Yeah, I just, I just want to understand.
Yep.
And then, under this schedule, you're getting, right now, every, every sixth grader has a study hall, or excuse me, seventh grader.
Every seventh grader.
That's right.
We haven't gotten to seventh grade yet.
Yep. And just from a, from a scheduling standpoint, you know, our sixth grade has primarily been in an elementary type of model, and this would get us to a, to a middle school model. And so some, sixth grader would be on, essentially on the, on our middle school schedule, on which they have not been the previous, you know, third year that this has happened, they have not been on the schedule.
So again, what we really want to point out is the options for students and family to own their education. We have a core level we're expecting all students to complete. But you'll notice, you could take two musics, again, you could take two world languages, again, you'll be able to take advanced science or an advanced humanities. You get to decide what it is beyond that core as long as you're on grade level. Nancy, did you have a question?
Well, I did. So I think what I'm hearing you say, Jason, is, is part of a coordinated middle school, and maybe this is the essence of it, is that the sixth graders would then change classes on the bell and have different teachers for different subject matters. For the next three years, they would have the same, well, the teachers would teach two different subjects, moving towards licensure where they would then focus on teaching one subject is, do I get that?
That, that is right. And I'd say we've kind of tried to do a little bit of that, but, but for the most part, it's still been an elementary format. So yes, that would be a, a major change, yep, under this proposal.
And, and we believe under that model, there's less, what I call, trauma to the system. It allows everyone to get used to that. We have excellent teachers that teach multi-classes now, and we think as they develop more specialization, they'll even get better. But in the course of doing it over three years, we're not seeking waivers and not doing things like that. We're focusing on teaching and learning, and so are our teachers.
And has staff been receptive of that? Obviously, it's, there's a burden there on the sixth grade teachers, and that's?
Well, they have been receptive. I, I can't say that there hasn't been questions on it, and there's been some soul-searching by individual staff members. But really, when we started this in 2010, when you started us on our journey, really in February to become a, a, a middle school with elementary students at that point in time, we knew we were headed towards something even better than what we had. And we discussed with the teachers that this was where we, we were heading. So now it's here, and for some, that's really hitting home, but I would say all have been very receptive.
So I'm going to go to our proposed seventh grade schedule. Again, you'll see hours two, three, four, five, same as what you saw for, for sixth grade, language A, math, humanities, science. Everybody would get FIED every other day. In seventh grade, our proposal would be that um students have a fine arts choice. So in sixth grade, our proposal is that everyone has to take a music and a visual arts. In seventh grade, and you'll see this in eighth grade, our proposal is that it's a fine arts choice. So you'd have to choose between music and art for your fine arts elective. And this is kind of what, what our IB kind of terminology, but you can still pick it up in, in terms of your electives, which I'll, I'll get to um in some of the other hours. So even if you'd pick for your fine arts, visual arts, you could still take music as, as one of your elective choices, or take two musics as part of your elective choices. So we're hoping to offer more opportunity, again, for, for our students. If you go down to seven, period seven A, world languages again be every other day, continue to be a choice, French, German, or Spanish. Seven B, you know, our, our classic kids have an elective choice to offset the everyday Spanish language arts for our ESP students. Currently, tech ed has been in eighth grade for, for a number of years. Our proposal is to move tech ed from eighth grade into seventh grade. And there is a, a technology requirement under IB. Our proposal, though, is to embed technology in sixth grade and eighth grade, keep it standalone in, in seventh grade. And then you'll see under eight B is an elective choice for, for all students, if you're, if you're at grade level. And again, you'll see at the bottom, if, if you're not at grade level in math and reading, where our proposal is that you have, have a remedial class or extra time in math or reading if you're below grade level. And Jim, to kind of address your point, um, a, a big add would be going to a full-class schedule and, and not have a mandated study hall, which we currently have and have had for a number of years.
So Jason, what's the add then? If you're getting rid of the study hall, what's coming in, in its place?
You want to take? Well, it, it's a little bit, because tech ed's been shifted a little bit, it's, it's a little bit hard to answer that, but pretty much your, your more elective classes that we're offering. And we have kind of a cost breakdown that we've kind of done um coming up as well.
Within our department chair group, there is some uh debate have uh really around the fine arts and visual arts. And you'll notice here that we've, we've really dropped to one as a requirement. That uh NYPD has that as the requirement, and that's what we've moved to. And there are some on our staff, our leadership team, that are, I'm going to say, we're still bouncing that around, they're questioning that decision. But this is where we're at today, but I, I promised the team that I would share with you that that is still a sticking point for some of our staff.
I have a question for you, Jason. On the uh tech ed?
Mm-hmm.
It was in eighth grade, now moving to seventh grade, would eighth graders have the opportunity to take it in seventh grade if they already missed it last year?
That's been brought up, and, and currently, I'd say, I, I think we're thinking no. But, but it's been brought up and it's something that we're kind of still kicking around a little bit, so.
I don't know if you have something to add more?
Right. We haven't been able to see a way of requiring it, possibly put uh an elective, but not a requirement. Not sure.
Like an elective for one year so they can capture those guys?
Possibly, but where we're landing today is at this point in time, is it, it is not available to eighth grade, but we're looking at that option, if that's possible. Bruce?
Uh, forgive my ignorance, but what's in tech ed these days?
Well, Bruce, you've been to the technology education class, a lot of simulation. We do everything from bridge building to model rocketry to, we do some of the standalone uh birdhouses and that woodworking kinds of things, but a lot of it is around CAD drawing, uh STEM types of things, science and technology, magnet kind of programming. It's really some cool state-of-the-art types of things that Barry McCain teaches. And as a matter of fact, last year, we honored him as our technology teacher, one of our two technology teachers of the year.
Thank you. It sounds like a lot more fun than what I took.
You'd love it.
So I've, I've got a question along that same line. So what I've heard so far, which sounds great, is that you're kind of going down that path of offering more choice, but based on what, you know, Bruce was just talking about with respect to tech ed, I'm wondering through the process of getting to this proposal, if you pursued options of, you know, a heavier focus, this is the engineer talking, sorry about this, but focusing on like the sta, you know, focusing on one thing, focusing on, you know, we're going to do a really deep dig on art, or we're going to do a really deep dig on a STEM type of program. So I'm wondering, did you guys consider that? And, you know, if, if so, why did you come to this uh proposal that offered a kind of a broader, broader array?
Thank you, Joe. We worked with McCrell and MDE, and the research that we looked at, it was better to stay broader longer. So when you're talking middle level, middle-level education, we didn't want to get so focused that we, they would miss those opportunities. You'll notice the tech ed class, every student has to take it. You'll notice that mu, music, every student must take a certain level of music, every student must take in sixth grade, every student must take the fine arts. But we have chosen not to really define it that tightly. We're going to let the high school do that, and for them to have more of what we call liberal arts approach. There are some schools that are becoming uh STEM magnets, those types of things, but we aren't. As a matter of fact, our, our key focus here, every student gets a major world language experience.
Thank you. I'm going to take you guys to our proposed eighth grade schedule. Again, the first four hours are the same, language A, math, humanities, and science. Six A, everybody gets PE. Six B, everybody gets a, a fine arts choice. In eighth grade, and this is the same as we've done for, for a number of years, world language in eighth grade is every day for every student. So French, German, Spanish, or if you're in our ESP program, you're going to have a world language class every day in eighth grade. Eight A and eight B, you're looking at two elective choices if you're at grade level, and those would be remedial classes if you're behind in math or behind in reading.
So one issue, maybe it's a little easier in eighth grade because you got two electives, but you're talking about to being able to take two languages. But if you're in band and want to take two languages, you're going to have some scheduling issues potentially, are you?
Potentially in eighth grade. Um, well, now, yes and no. So if, if you wanted to, if you were taking two languages, in eighth grade, your two electives would be that language, and then your fine arts choice probably would be banned then. So it would, it would work.
It works out here, but then you're only going to be able to offer the languages uh, you know, a couple hours of the day, right? So you, I guess you got to be careful how you schedule with band, you know?
Oh, sure. The schedule would be all sorts of fun, yes. Totally. Mm-hmm.
We've, we've worked hard to not have the schedule drive what we want kids to learn. And it is a challenge, but we think it's important that we look at it that way than the other.
And I get that, but it does seem that, that there's some kids aren't going to be able to get what they want just because of scheduling, probably.
Well, there's some students that will have to prioritize, yes. And that will create some angst. When you give people choice, there's some angst that occurs. That it, there is no angst if, if you're given the program that you have to take. And that's currently what we have today. So really, as a board, what you need to consider is, do you give our constituency, as we're recommending, some more choice over what they have and give them some more ownership of what we're offering? And we're saying definitively, yes.
Les and Jason, I just have one question. I can understand the difference in FTEs between maybe sixth grade and seventh grade. They're, they're the same, but I'm not sure why, why are there different FTEs, seventh grade?
Are you zooming ahead?
Well, not FTEs, di, different sections, seventh grade to eighth grade. I can understand maybe in sixth to seventh. I can understand maybe in sixth to seventh, but seventh to eighth are different.
So like, you mean like in seventh grade, there's 11 sections, in eighth grade, there's 10?
Right.
Yes. That's just based on how many kids there are in that specific grade level projected for next year.
So that could change year to year, this is, you're just looking at next year?
We're looking at next year, currently how things are looking in the district right now.
Thanks.
Yep.
And if I could, I just want to follow up on the question on choices. Eighth grade might be tight, but over sixth through eighth grade, a student and family is actually going to have more opportunities to get the things they want than they do now. But it's maybe too vague.
Potentially, yes. So if, let's say, only 14 students choose accelerated or advanced humanities, so even though it's listed as an elective option, we wouldn't offer it. That's the reality, and those 14 students would then have to shift to the second choice. That's not unlike how the high school operates. Now, we want to operate a little bit differently than that, just because our students are younger, and so there's more requirements here. And there's one elective in sixth grade, two in seven, two in eight, offered now. So what are the support systems we'd like to put into place? One is the dean at the sixth grade level to, for equity, we have it in seventh and eighth grade as well, and we think to help with the transition, that's one of our goals, one of our significant goals in our action statements, having someone there will really help to make that happen and to anchor that sixth grade program. Currently, we don't have any social work time at the middle school, and we think that specialized expertise would be helpful. We're really not looking at an add here, we're really looking at dividing up and really sharing with the middle school, the social worker time that is happening throughout the district. Every other school has social work expertise, we're asking that some be brought to the middle school as well. And that, the fact that we're increasing the amount of classes that we're offering, the types of classes, and the enriching experience of those classes, we're looking to increase our supply budget by $15,000.
Did you want to talk about the looping at all?
Yeah, teaming and looping, you have an item here. We would be able to bring back, thank you, we would be able to bring back a type of teaming and looping. We really haven't gotten very far into that discussion process, and at this point in time, if we do this, it'd be a no-cost add. But how do you team, or how do you loop? Do you loop six, seven, eight? Do you loop six, seven? Do you loop seven, eight? How do you bring those pieces back when you have licensure issues? It's really too broad of a discussion and something we really don't want to entertain at this point in time, because we don't have enough specifics around it. The thing I can share with you, Jim, is it would be a no-cost item if we do these other things. Yes?
Les, it puzzles me that it would be a no-cost item, because I don't remember it being a no-cost item when we had it before.
Well, we're adding, I said, if we add these things back, and if we do the increases that we have here under the staffing requirements, we don't have to do anything above and beyond that. You'll notice there's a difference between current 2012, 13 is 42.85 FTEs in our building. We're requesting, under the proposed model, for 2013, 14, 47. And with that, you would get that as a possibility, is what I'm saying. There's nothing above and beyond that if we want to add that back.
Les, can you just briefly, maybe you can't do it briefly, what does the dean do? We have a principal, we have an assistant principal, we have deans, do you have people in the in-school suspension area? What are the different functions that those administrators have at the middle school that, well, let me just stop there?
The dean, counselor, I'll call it dean, because the high school has counselors nine through 12, we have deans. But if you think of it in a similar level as the high school level, as a highly successful model of counselors following students through, we would do that with the sixth grade dean would follow through with the students, the eighth grade would rotate back, and they would track those students and would work more closely with the families, the students, career education components, those types of things we currently don't have in place, because we just don't have the staff to be able to do it. One of the things we talked about is even with the social worker and with the dean, really adding back some chemical health counseling components. That was taken away several budget cycles ago. And so those would be the components that would come back that's targeted to sixth grade students that currently have no one really assisting them with.
Other services, like, you know, gifted and talented, pullouts then from the existing program and?
We would not be looking to add back more staff. We would be looking at changes in that. You know, the exciting piece that Dr. Bowers and I talk about of having a dream fulfilled, bringing a third grade into the school, or sixth grade, a third grade level, is really the fact that our school has gotten larger and our kids and families have remained longer in our school. We're going to be able to do things in gifted and talented, in the ELL, in special ed that we haven't been able to do before, because we just haven't been able to keep the kids and families long enough to get to know us and work with us and for us to develop them the way we'd like to.
The other question, kind of related that I have on that, is so you were giving us like a program for those students, the enrichment for those students who qualify, let's say. How do you make that determination? What if you have a parent of a kid who's maybe struggling in math?
Thank you.
Is very successful in foreign language, and you know what, I want my kid to have two languages, and I don't want the remedial math, you know? How do you make those decisions?
Thank you. So when we're looking at math and reading or Language Arts, we're looking at multiple data points. For sure, we're going to look at two, maybe three, and what are they? MCAs, we're going to be looking at students who are not proficient or partially proficient is one indicator point. Second indicator point is a full year or more behind grade level on an NWEA. Those are two we're going to be looking at, and we've found when we've worked with parents on this, that they know that math or computational skills, along with reading, Language Arts, are gateway skills. They're really above and beyond being a subject. They're skills that are needed to make sure that you're successful in life. And so we have found the parents who we've done this with now in Read 180 and other subjects have really been supportive, as long as we have the data to support our decision. Third data point we would look at would be the daily grades and teacher recommendation.
So your answer is it's a school decision and?
Well, I?
Based on facts, but the school decides?
This is our recommendation. Ultimately, it's a school district recommendation or a school district decision, but above and beyond that, Jim, it's our state's decision that says we have to have high-quality learners graduating from schools being able to read and do math. And we're being evaluated on our results with students in those two areas, those pivotal areas. And we're committed to getting all of our students to where they need to be on grade level.
Yeah, Les, I heard some of this on the side council at the middle school, and I may be remembering this wrong, and I'm sure you'll tell me if I am, but does this change the length of the class time? Does it reduce the length of the class time?
For who?
Well, I thought I was hearing that there was less time for math in particular, and I wanted to hear about that, because that felt like a negative to me, since we're struggling a bit with teaching them the math concepts as they are.
Sure.
So I wanted to hear, is that true, and what's the pros and the cons as you look at this?
Thank you. You heard correctly, in sixth grade, in seventh and eighth grade, there are no changes. In sixth grade, there is a reduction of eight minutes. And we've been working with our department chair, Maria Argo, and really our department chairs, and really looking at the data, and we believe that our students that are on grade level, I'm going to say our students that are on grade level, will be able to make that transition. Our students that are not on grade level are actually going to get more time. I'm going to say that again. Our students that are not on grade level are going to get more time. They're going to have their regular math class, and then they're going to have a targeted skills class in mathematics, and their total time on math will be greater.
Is there more on, are you done?
We are at feedback. Anything else?
What, have you thought about, so this obviously costs more than the current program, based on the additional FTE? Any thoughts on how, I mean?
Well, I'm going to go back, Jim, to really a statement, I was in a morning meeting with you, oh, about a year and a half ago, and you said, Les, bring to me a high-quality, coordinated middle school program. And so do I have all the Xs and Os how we're going to pay for that? No, I don't. Will I partner with you and give you the information for you to make a decision, you, the school board, make a decision, this is a direction we should go? Yes, I will. If you need more information to determine whether this is the high-quality, middle-level program you want to do, I'll get that to you. But can I give you all the Xs and the Os on the numbers it's going to, how to get the dollars that really meet the difference between these numbers? I can't today. Would I like to attract more students? I would. Would I like to remain open longer? I would. Those are issues that I think we make decisions jointly on. But I'm here today to really represent what we think at the middle school is a high-quality, coordinated middle school that our community can be proud of. Our staff are working hard today, they're committed to the kids. Our sixth grade teachers, along with our seventh, eighth grade teachers, are working really hard and are talented, but our programming doesn't mesh together at times. It kind of fights with each other, because we have some teachers on the bell schedule, some not. We'd like to really be able to shift some of our sixth grade teachers and allow them to teach eventually seventh and eighth grade. We're excited about those opportunities, and with your help, I believe we're going to get there.
Ah, so the sixth grade teachers, once they get the licensure in three years, could also teach seventh and eighth grade? That's the part I'd missed before.
Yes.
Okay.
Student, most teachers will get a 5'8" license. We currently have two teachers, one in science, one in social studies, has an elementary license and a 5'8" science, 5'8" social. We even have an elementary teacher with an ELL license, and we have another teacher and a music license. So they would be able to teach all of those subjects, and that causes greater flexibility for us as well.
Les, does this plan with adding the other electives that you're proposing, what is the current number of preps teachers have, and does this plan change that?
I'm trying to make sure you aren't asking me a broad enough question. The sixth grade teachers?
Get back to us on that. I mean, if you don't know, that's fine, because we're just turning the process.
Well, it will not change seven, eight. It will not change seven, eight. It should drop the amount of preps that they have in the future. Three years from now, it should, when they become subject specialists.
Ken?
I just wanted to, if those questions were answered, I just wanted to draw your attention to the, one of your bullets was develop a comprehensive transition for fifth and sixth grade, of which I didn't hear anything on that. I realize that you may not have a good plan at this point, but encourage to work on that, because a lot of the parents, when they go up to sixth grade, the kids are going up to sixth grade, they're comfortable in knowing that it's going to be an easy transition for them into the school system. This current plan doesn't really house that at all.
It only, correct, it only speaks to it as an action statement at this point in time. So if we can go back historically a little bit, before we had sixth grade come to our school, we had a very elaborate transition plan when the kids came from elementary grades from six to seven, meaning they moved from an elementary environment to a middle school environment. Once we dropped off and we changed from really going from one elementary school to really another elementary school, it just happened to be in our building, we lessened a lot of those transitional pieces. So we're ready to bring some of those back, many of them, and add to them as well.
Okay.
As a matter of fact, we met with two parents today, one sitting in the room that were talking about career education and a career education component starting in sixth grade. That would be one of those transition pieces that really we're looking to try and do as we move a kid from an elementary mindset to a middle school or secondary mindset.
Okay.
And to kind of couple, kind of two of your guys' questions, Ken and Nancy's, that you guys asked. The sixth grade dean would help, A, with the transition, but then we know that in an elementary model, like the homeroom teacher really supports the student. So for the most part, if parents have a question at the elementary level, they're going to call the homeroom teacher. The same thing happens in sixth grade right now. For the most part, the homeroom teacher is that support for the family as well as the student. If we shift to more of a middle school model, the dean would potentially then be that person, kind of how it is in seventh and eighth, which is where, again, we feel the need of having that additional front office person to help with the transition as well as a support for students in a middle school model.
Jason, have you ever thought about the Oriole time teacher being that contact person at the middle school level, or how that would work?
Well, it's only 15 minutes a day, so that would be a challenge. Excuse me?
It's zero time with the dean, is what I'm saying. This is why I'm wondering, you know, sometimes the dean may or may not have any time with the student unless there's a problem.
Well, I would like to think not. I would like to think we'd be more proactive than that. And I think at our other grade levels, seven through 12, I would hope we'd say that as well.
Chris?
Les, two things. First of all, you already have a great middle school, and we appreciate that. I think the board agrees with that. I've heard some really good feedback in the different elementary schools I've been to from parents who have had students move into the junior high, and they've been extremely happy. But the two points I wanted to make was, on the art and music and forcing kids into that, my daughter didn't think she could sing, and John Moskowski taught her that she could sing, and I was pleased with that, just because that, you know, there are sopranos, and there are altos, and somewhere in between, and she learned a lot. I think the arts at our junior high, forcing it, if you will, by having requirements in music and art, I think that's great. The other thing, part is on the budget. You didn't hear any board members here disagreeing with you on where you want to take this. However, the board's not going to, I mean, the board eventually approves a budget, but it's really among you and the other principals and the superintendent to work that out. I heard an expression the other day that said, we can afford anything we want to do, we just cannot afford everything we want to do. Now, this is really important. We found the money to go IB. This, the things you want to do here, I think are very important for the middle school, and there's a way to find these funds. So I think, but it's not a board decision, and you know, that $15,000, we're not authorizing that $15,000, you know that. But the fact is, we are aware of it, but it's for the administration to work out, and we want to see you do that. So we want the best middle school that we can have, and we know you can do it.
Thank you.
One more, I just wanted to make sure that you heard me, and that is on the sixth grade teachers, a mentoring program of some sort, because I see that there's reduction in sixth grade teachers, and I know that there's in every organization, there's some people that just don't want to come along. And sometimes, some efforts or some coaxing could help them along so that everybody can stay happy. So I just want to make sure you heard that one. And then I'd like you to entertain the thought of the sixth grade commingling with the seventh grade, perhaps, on some of the advanced classes, so that the sixth graders could take some of those advanced math or advanced science instead of not.
So Ken, to respond to that sort of, you know, I'm going to say publicly a strategy that we're trying to do. We're on a very aggressive and short timeline. If we want to do this, we need to register students, build a registration guide, register students, first of all, explain it to all of our parents, register students, and start staffing by end of February. So that is even in some regards, much more aggressive than really when you first told us that we were going to take 330 students, increase our school by 50% from February to the fall of September, because we built their schedule for them. Here, when we're really trying to allow students and families to have an elective model, really it is a much more complicated process. So back to your So back to your, your statement, yes, we have a lot of work to do, not only with our staff, but with our parents and our community. So I'm, I'm agreeing completely.
All right, well, thanks. There's clearly been a lot of hard work, and that is exactly, you know, what we're looking for, what would, you think works the best for us, and we appreciate the hard work that's gone into it so far, and it's something that we'll have to have continued dialogue on, on how it works, and I know you got a tight timeline, so.
We appreciate partnering with you, and we're excited, and it's, it's been great for me to spend the bulk of my career here, because you've always been willing, the boards have always been willing to partner and to really promote the work we're trying to do. So thank you.
All right. Thanks much. All right, the next item on the agenda is the Aquila Elementary School report. We have the principal Clarence Pollak.
Good evening, Dr. Bowers and the fellow board members. I'm the proud interim principal of Aquila Elementary School, and I have my wonderfully amazing and very talented colleague and friend, Olivia Tolzien, next to me. She is our literacy coach at Aquila, as well as our IB and professional development coordinator. So tonight, we will be sharing in this presentation of Aquila, and hope you enjoy. I would like to start out by sharing with you the Aquila school mission. We are a collaborative community that fosters inquiry, cultural understanding, and respect with the unwavering belief in student achievement. This past fall, we had across the dis, across the school at Aquila, we had every classroom come up with essential agreements, and this goes on in our other schools as well in the district, but what we did slightly different is, we brought those students, representatives from each of those kindergarten through fifth-grade classrooms, and put together a constitutional convention. And both Olivia and I led that meeting, and we had, it was amazing, we had kindergarten students working with fifth-grade students, we had first graders working with fourth graders, and together, we took all of those essential agreements from those classrooms and put together what we call Aquila's Constitution. And I'm very pleased with our final essential agreements, which I'd like to share with you. Be a thinker, reflect, and make good choices. Be principled, have self-control, and tell the truth. Show commitment to learning, cooperation with others, and enthusiasm. Be caring, be open-minded, and accept others. I am honored to work alongside of our talented, creative, and hard-working teachers. The entire staff at Aquila Elementary School is completely committed to all of our students, and puts forth, puts them first as they work with each and every one of them to reach their fullest potential in all capacities. We are truly proud of all of our students. Now I'd like to share with you an AnimoDoo video that our media center specialist Cheryl Edwards put together for this presentation. This is another type of technology that our students at the elementary level put together. They use it, for example, at our IB exhibition, and it's a great tool. I'm not even gonna watch it right now. I learned that, um, you can, that energy affects the entire earth, not just you alone. are truly proud. The teachers, the staff, all of us work very, very hard to put together what is, I think, a pretty amazing school for these students. So now I will be going into the 2012 goals and results. Prachi Mukherjee and I worked together in putting together a bar graph to hopefully simplify how we have done, what our goals were, and what our results were. And this is according to our 2012 MCA data and testing results. In regards to, we also have different goals, and I want to stress and explain why we have that. We want to close that racial achievement gap. So we have specific goals for all of our students, as well as our black and brown students. And the reason for that is, so that we are working diligently and working at the data and coming up with interventions to best meet all of their needs. In the area of reading, I'll start with reading. For all students, our goal was 85%, and our results were 79%. In the area of our black and brown students, 70% was our goal, and our results were 73%. Pretty proud of that. In regards to math, our goal was 76%, and we reached a result of 73%. Also, with our, in the area of black, black students in regards to math, excuse me, our goal was 57%, and we reached a result of 63%. I also want to share something that we were very excited about and want to share with all of you. In 2012, students at Aquila reached 100% of their adequate yearly progress, that's AYP proficiency targets. I do want to point out that all proficiency targets were recalculated for all schools in the state of Minnesota after the state waiver for the 2011-12 school year. And as you can see with the bar graph over the years, we had 14 targets in regards to reading and math this year, this past year, and we reached all 14. We were very, very excited. Last year, we missed it by one, and that was our reading ELL, and Olivia will be sharing very soon our wonderful results in that area as well. Yes, Ken?
There was. On the bar graph, the next one, the one before that, the projections or the estimated goal, how was that determined? Was that determined by the MCA pre-test, or how were they determined?
These, these goals were recalculated after the waiver. Our original goals were even higher, but after the state MDE and we received the waiver, the state of Minnesota, all of our goals across all of the schools in the state of Minnesota were recalculated. No longer that original goal to have 100% by 2014, now we're working at 2017, and so our goals have been recalculated.
I'm more referring to the projected, so we'll see, all the, all kids reading was projected to be 85%, and came in six cent, or 6% short. I was wondering, where was that projection come from? Was it tribal knowledge from the teachers, or was it from calculations from the MCAs?
The results?
The goal.
The goal came from our data retreat, as well as the state of Minnesota regarding the MCA testing.
So it's-
Based on previous years. 2011, 2000, yes.
And then, is it a mathematical calculation of 2017? You just figure out where we need to be by 2017, right?
Correct. Thank you, Jim.
I got you. There you just told me, okay.
Nope.
I get it.
Now I'd like to share with you our 2013 goals for this current school year in both math and reading. Again, these goals were calculated from the state of Minnesota and were shared with all of us at our data retreat this past August. In the area of math, 78% of all students will be proficient in math, based on the 2013 MCA testing. Again, in the area of our black and brown students, 61% of our students will be proficient in math, based on our 2013 MCA testing. And our data retreat group looked at our data and really analyzed it, and noticed that our special education numbers were not as high as we would like them to be, so we at Aquila have been working collaborative, collaboratively with our special education teachers. And no longer is it, oh, those are your students. They are all of our students, and how can we both work together, regular ed teachers, as well as special education specialists, working together to best meet all of their specific needs? So we have added both under math and reading, a special education student goal as well, and that is, 59% of all of our special education students will be proficient in math, again, based on the MCA testing. Now in reading, 87% of all of our students will be proficient in reading, 73% of our black and brown students will be proficient in reading, and 66% of our special education students will be proficient in reading, again, based on the 2013 MCA testing.
We may have the same question. If in 2012, 63% of our black, black students were proficient in math, why would our goal be only 61%? And then on reading, it's the identical number, it's 73%. Now it's slightly different cohorts of kids, but the numbers don't seem to match, because they should be higher.
And because of the recalculation from the waiver, actually, you'll be finding this out as all elementary schools are presenting to you and doing their annual reports, we all have very similar or the same percentages going into this year, and it's this year only because of the waiver. And then going forward into school years, going forward, we will have different percentages depending on how our students are doing at our particular school. So for example, our other schools have identical goals, some of our schools have met them, so they might have higher goals.
But you look like you've met the goal. So why don't you have a higher goal, Aquila?
What?
We did, and then it was told to us at this.
Yeah. My answer would be, our goals were higher, but we were shared, Prachi Mukherjee, our data specialist and assessment specialist, worked with me in regards to these goals, and I even had some questions myself in regards to not quite understanding it. So I think together, we are learning more and more, as this state waiver has shared changes, good, but also some confusion as well. So we're working through it. I will get more data and answers for you, Julie.
Yeah, if we could get that, or whether it comes separately or with the next, if we have a January elementary presentation, but I'd like an explanation on that.
Okay.
I know that you don't see the goals as ceilings, that they are floors, and you're gonna go far above that with the students, or at least that's your goal, but I want to make sure we're formally adopting that as well.
Great question, thank you. Bruce?
Yeah, I, I guess Julie asked my question, and then Ken was asking before about the goals and how they're set. I, I just want to go, go back to that page with the 85, 79, all reading, the goal, and then the result. And then for the black kids, the 70% was the goal, and you came out at 73. Okay, now, I, I'm just looking at that on the reading, I'm saying, okay, the black kids had a 70% goal versus the 85% overall, that's a 15% difference. And then when the actual came out at 79 and 73, that's a six-point difference. Now, that would seem to me to be closing the gap on reading. That would seem to be a really good thing. Okay, now, go over to the math side. The 76 and 57, that's a 19-point difference, and then the 73 versus 63, that's a 10 percentage point difference. That would also seem to be closing the gap in math also. Now the fact that we didn't get to our goal, I'm not as worried about that as I am, I mean, I'd like to see us get to the goal every single time, but I am, we've been looking for the data that says we're closing the gap. Are you convinced that that's what this data is telling you?
Yes, it is telling us that exactly, but we have a lot more room for improvement. And none of the teachers at Aquila are ever satisfied, they always want more, and that's why it is a honor for me to be working with them. There's some of the most dedicated and hard-working teachers I have ever had a chance to work with. We also, just to add to that, I want to share that we have over 80 volunteers, community volunteers. It is very, very impressive, the number of volunteers that come into Aquila, thanks to Sarah Kreswick and Kathleen Hayek, and we have, all the way from retired teachers to engineers, come in and work with these, and many of these volunteers work in our reading intervention program, and do, and they love coming, day in and day out, week after week, to help work with these students and see the progression of these students, that some of them are struggling, and seeing the success after they've spent the year, the month, semester with them. So I want to do another plug for, and a big thank you to all the community volunteers that come and make our school a wonderful place for the students.
I would just want to clarify to reinforce what Bruce is saying, that I think this is evidence of closing the gap, but we'd really want to look at the actual proficiency results from each year, and not just the goals. The goals are related, and, and so it's an indication, but I'd want to compare the actual numbers.
Yeah, okay.
I agree. Kudos to the staff.
I'd like to give a very, very quick update on our SPARC counseling grant. We are so excited to have this counseling grant, and Ms. Olaf, now- And Ms. Olaf, now Mrs. Nelson, she was just recently married, gave a quick update to me. She has been able to accomplish 81 classroom lessons, and this is this fall so far. She has completed 57 small group meetings. That includes her SPARC student groups, as well as other type of groups, like friendship group, grieving group, or group, groups on grieving process. We are also looking at constantly our discipline data, and how can we tweak it, and how can we, as a staff, work at reducing those numbers? We have intervention concentrations at our kindergarten and fifth grade level. At the kindergarten level, it's dealing with anger management. And at the fifth grade level, it's respect and kindness. I'm excited to also share with you our fifth graders. In just two days, on Wednesday, we'll be attending the Kindness Retreat put on by Youth Frontiers. And all of our schools will be going to it, our fifth grade levels from each of the schools. And it's going to be a great retreat, and they're looking forward to it. We are also putting together a career day in mid-March, where parents will be able to come in and interactively show their careers to the students at Aquila. And we're super excited about that. I also added a quick quote of praise and encouragement to Mrs. Nelson regarding the grant and what she's been able to do.
Yes, not really a question, but more of a statement on the career day. Very excited to see that happening. And I had a conversation with her, and it's going to be fantastic.
It is.
Fantastic.
And thanks, Ken. I expect you to be there.
Yeah, we've talked about that, too. So are all schools are doing that, I think, correct? Isn't that part of the curriculum, or part of the thing that all schools are doing? Is it just Aquila?
I think all of them are working, doing a variation of a career day like that. Now, I'd like to share with you our response to instruction, or RTI pyramid. And both Olivia and I, this is where I will split the presentation and hand it over to her. But I want to stress that this is connected to our strategic plan, Strategy 1, and that is St. Louis Park Public Schools uses a district-wide system of interventions designed for all students to achieve our mission and strategic objectives without demographically predictable results. I will focus on math and hand it over to Olivia. She will focus on literacy and reading. In regards to the lower part of the pyramid, this is the 80% of our population, most of our students. Our teachers are constantly differentiating their lessons and activities to meet all the specific learning needs in their classrooms. We are having pre and post-assessments and grade levels within their PLCs, their professional learning communities, are putting together RTI sessions for their grade-level students. And I'm happy to announce that we have Alex Math once again for all of our third, fourth, and fifth grade students. This Alex Math is an online math curriculum that our teachers use, along with our current district math curriculum. Each third, fourth, and fifth grader has their own computer account, and they can log on at home if they have access to computers, or at the public library. And each teacher is required, an expectation, to come down to the computer lab at least one half-hour a week. Many teachers are even doing more than a half-hour with them.
Clarence, that's more than just remediation. That could be enrichment, too, right? You could be going ahead, and with Alex Math, I mean, that just takes you as far as you can go, right?
Thank you, Jim, for pointing that out. Yes, exactly. Some of our students are even a grade level ahead within Alex Math, so it's doing all of the above, which we're really excited about. And we have worked with Alex Math the last few years at Aquila. At the sec... Sorry?
And all these kids have it at home, too, if they so choose, right?
That is correct. Yep. At the second level of our pyramid, in regards to math, we have our Title I teachers, Michelle Carlson, as well as Rochelle Williams. And they work with student groups that have different needs according to data. We look at multiple points of data, information, and how they're doing within their math understanding and concepts. They do pull out, as well as push in, to the classrooms. I also have listed Alex Math on the second level, because we have focus groups that both Michelle and Rochelle work with in regards to specific needs. And then they use Alex Math and focus on concepts that the students are struggling with. And at the top of our pyramid, we have our special education services, as well as our ELL, gifted and talented services for those students that qualify for those services. And now, I'll turn it over to Olivia.
Good evening, board. Good evening, Dr. Bowers. I just want to first share with you a little bit about response to instruction in reading. As you can see, that first tier is focused on our grade levels. In kindergarten, we are focused on letter naming and letter sounds. And those teachers work with small groups of students who are in need of intense support in those two areas. And then, they do progress monitoring with those students and bring that data back during their reading PLCs to see if their instruction is working on those two focus areas. In our first grade, we're really focusing on phonics. Our first-grade teachers have been trained in Orton-Gillingham, and it's a multisensory approach to learning phonics. And again, it's for those small groups of students that need that intense support in phonics and word work in that area. And then, they bring data back to their reading PLCs to make sure that their instruction is working for those students. In second grade, we're now focused more on bringing those skills to print for those lower kids. In second grade, each classroom teacher is piloting a program called Leveled Literacy Intervention. It focuses on guided reading, phonics and word work, fluency, and there's one more, writing. Thank you. And so, those second-grade teachers, they work with the lowest three to four students in their classroom for a half-hour a day, really focusing on those skills. And then, they monitor progress for those students on a weekly basis also. And so, and then they bring that data, again, back to their PLCs to make sure that the instruction's working. In grades three through five, we're really focused on comprehension. We have, we purchased formative assessments and comprehension skills this year for our students, for our teachers. And so, based on the skill that they're teaching for reading during a period of time, they do a pre-test and a post-test, and make sure that their instruction's working on that comprehension skill, bring it back to reading PLCs, see if we need to reteach for a whole group, or for a small group, or if we need to do any shifting within the grade level for reteaching, or for advancement. And so, that's pretty much what we're doing in grade level for response to instruction. If you move on to the second tier, where, that's where more of our pullouts are. You've heard us talk about Read 180. That's for grades three through five students. It's continuing to do well for those students. We still do Wiggle Works for our first and second-grade students for reading intervention. Something that's new is called Systems 44. Sorry, hoping my voice lasts. Systems 44 is phonics, and it's for, it's computerized, it's individualized, and it's for grades three through five students. It's the students who have not gained those phonics skills yet for reading. And so, in addition to Read 180, a lot of kids are doing some Systems 44 work also. And then, for Tier 3, for special education, you heard me talk about the Leveled Literacy Intervention for second grade and how we're piloting that. I have a special education teacher that's working with me to see if it's going to work with some of the grades three, four, or five students. It's a well-researched program, and we're going to see, and it says that it works well with special education students. And so, we're going to pilot it and see if it does, and see what the results have for those students. Our ELL is more of a push-in still with Read 180 and Wiggle Works, as well as a pullout for those students who are like newcomers. And then Gifted and Talented, Patricia Armstrong is still continuing to work with us and doing a great job at extending the learning in language arts for our students. The next part that I wanted to share is about professional development, or professional learning at Aquila. Our main focus always is about student achievement. And the best way to make sure that our students are achieving is to make sure that they want to be at school, and they're actually in the classroom to receive the instruction. And so, that's where the responsive classroom comes in. Responsive classroom is a behavior management approach that gives a structure for our school. And all of our students, all of our teachers at the beginning of the school year, were trained in response to misbehavior, so that we're all talking the same language and doing the same thing in our classrooms, on how we respond to misbehavior. Our support staff, so all of our aides that work in our classrooms, our aides that work in lunchroom, recess, they were also trained in responsive classroom. And they learned the language and the approach of responsive classroom, so that they can be speaking the same way and acting the same way as the classroom teacher, so that we're all hearing the same message. And then, our specialist teachers, they were also trained on how to get the responsive classroom approach done, in that 30-minute timeframe in which they have a short amount of time to go to media, or go to FIAED. And so, all of our teachers were trained in responsive classroom. And just like our students, they need to have, our teachers need a supportive community to work together, so that's where professional learning communities come in. We, all of our teachers are involved in professional learning communities. We have one big one, being our whole staff, and we meet often. And then, all of our grade levels are part of a professional learning community. And then, our specialist teachers and our special education teachers, we meet regularly to discuss data on reading, math, and how IB is going for our school. A lot of the times, our question that we're asking during professional learning communities is, what do we expect our students to learn? And so, that's where the next bullet point comes from, is knowledge of our standards. We have worked extremely hard at getting our teachers to know what it is that they're expected to be teaching, so that they can organically fit it in throughout their day, as well as intentionally teach it. And all of our standards are incorporated into our units of inquiry, and our teachers are knowledgeable about what it is that they're expected to be teaching. And I think that's really important, so that we can then meet individual needs. So now that we finally know exactly what we're supposed to be teaching, now we can differentiate for our students. And so, within our professional development, we have really worked on, how can we meet individual needs in our classroom? Mr. Pollak talked about Alex. We've trained our teachers in Alex. In our Houghton-Mifflin math program, there's a thing that's called Think Central, where you can differentiate assignments and assign them on the computer, and you can go to the computer lab, and they can all be working on different assignments at the same time. Another way is through guided reading. We've done a lot of professional development on how to best teach guided reading, and that's at different instructional phases. And so, finally, it's awareness of staff and what type of training that they need to have. We know who is proficient in many areas in our building, and then, we also have to know ourselves on what we need training. And so, we really tried to provide our teachers with the training that they need, either off-site or in-house. They can request time to go visit another teacher, or they can request to go to a workshop, or often, we bring people in. And the next slide shows you just what we've done. Last year, we knew that our teachers needed help with English language, how to do the best instruction for our English language learners. And we worked collaboratively with Metro XU. And we had a trainer come in, and she helped us develop some strategies to work with our ELL population. And you notice, in 2011, our result was 55% of our ELL population was proficient in reading. And in 2012, we went up to 67%. So we want to celebrate the fact that our professional development is working for our students and for our teachers. And lastly, but not least, the International Baccalaureate Program. Mr. Pollak shared with you one of the wonderful things that came out of our first planner. We, as a staff, came together, and we wanted to have all of our students come into the beginning of the school year under the same big idea, excuse me, where they would all be learning the same things, developing essential agreements, building community. And out of that, we had our Constitutional Convention, and I thought that was great. I'm so sorry. The next thing is, our staff just got done reviewing standards and practices for IB. Do you want to tell them?
And we are getting ready for our evaluation, which is, we just got our dates from IBO. It is August 4th and 5th. It is a Monday and Tuesday, where a group of specialists come out from out-of-state and come to Aquila and evaluate how we've been doing since we have become an IB PYP school. So we have been working on getting ready and preparing all of the policies over the last year, updating and tweaking recommendations that we received when they last were here. So we're excited, we're ready, and we think we're going to do pretty darn good.
Clarence, is that that one-week-long process that they do?
In February, it's just a two-day process. They'll be here Monday, August 4th, oh, excuse me, February 4th, and Tuesday, February 5th.
The self-study, though, that we've just been through, is over a year-long process.
Yes.
So our staff has had been reflecting on all of our practices and how we are doing through IB for the past year. It's been a pretty intense evaluation and self-study. Finally, assemblies. We're continuing to do assemblies for IB at Aquila, where students can share their knowledge of what they've been studying. And we try to do one about once a month, but it ends up being just a grade level has one time throughout the year, that they present their learning. And the students are enjoying it, and we're learning a lot from one another. And finally, fifth-grade exhibition went really well last year, and many of you came out to see what we are doing, and I hope that you come again. It's May 24th, the Thursday before Memorial Day. So it's the same date, and I hope to see you there. Thanks.
I'd like to publicly thank all of the board members and Dr. Bowers for your wonderful support. And now, if there's any other questions or comments, please.
I had a little comment here on your circle thing there. Responsive classroom, or professional learning, it was one of those two that you guys did. It's just kudos. Where you brought in all of your staff in the summer and had them all talk about the same language, so that the people in the classroom, and the people in the hallway, and the people in the lunchroom are all saying the same thing for discipline, or for corrective actions, or whatever. So, kudos.
Thank you, Ken.
Joe?
I was wondering, in terms of exhibition for this year, last year, it went so well, it was presented so well, I was very impressed by what the students did. I was wondering if there's anything new, or things that you learned from last year that you're going to apply for this year in terms of their projects and their presentations?
Well, one thing we learned is that we need more mentors. It's a lot of student work, and so, I worked with Sarah, I can't say her last name well. Sarah, I always call her Sarah K., the volunteer woman. And she worked with me to develop our volunteers for that, and she is leaving. And so, I need to beef up, how am I going to really train our mentors to help our students? So that's one thing, is how to get quality mentors to work with our students.
And what is the time commitment on that?
Once a week, an hour a week.
Unless you have two kids, and then it's like two hours.
I was able to do that math.
And I think she was trying to push you to do two kids this year.
I heard the volunteering from this direction, and I heard, or the mentor from this direction, and I heard, Joe, you should volunteer from this direction.
We would love it, that's for sure.
All right, well, thank you very much. It sounds like things are going really well, and we're pleased, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, continuing on with our agenda, the next item up is the American Indian Committee Update, and it's Frida Bailey. Okay, continuing on with our agenda, the next item up is the American Indian Committee update, and it's Frida Bailey. Cory, I think you should come every meeting.
Thank you, Cory. Hi, good evening, Dr. Bowers and board members. My name is Frida Bailey. I'm a principal and special assignment to adjust the achievement gap. And this evening, I will talk to you a little bit about the, I'm sorry, Minnesota Statute 124D, which requires all Minnesota school districts with 10 or more American Indian students to have a parent Indian committee. And we were able to meet on December 5th. I had a group of parents come and we discussed the Transmittal Agreement Resolution. And we discussed what is it that St. Louis Park offers to our students, what type of support. We also talked about what is it that the parents would like to see as far as in the classroom for students. And we were able to visit the website where I was able to gather information about the Native American parent, American Indian group. And so we went to the district's website and we have information for those that would like to visit. And it's under Curriculum Instruction. Make sure I'm getting this right. So if someone should visit the website, you will be able to look at Curriculum Instruction. And we have information about the American Indian Parent Committee. Under this website, parents or staff members, students will be able to see when we have our meeting dates, the purpose of the meeting. And I'm sorry, this is not working out. And they will be able to find educational resources. And I'm going to need Cory to help me again. For whatever reason, it's not showing the bottom part. This part here. Thank you. So when they go to the educational resources, for instance, one of the things that the parents talked about was resources for the Native American or American Indian group. And in Minnesota, there is a website where parents can go and find information about this. And this is just talking about services that can be provided to students. And it also has information about if parents or students want to, people want to volunteer, just different events that are taking place throughout Minnesota. Also, on the website, if someone has information or just want to find research about a notable American Indian, they can go to the website here. If they want to find information about powwows, recipes, other educational information, music, they can go to this website, and that's the Gathering of Nations. We have the history of Native Americans. There's a video that others can find out information about that. And then the National Museum of the American Indian Group as well. The links here will provide lesson plans for staff members. Let's say I want to teach something about harmony and balance. And I can go to this link and it will bring me, or provide a lesson plan about harmony and balance. And I can use that in the classroom. The information is for primary and intermediate grade levels. And so teachers will have some information that they can share with students and a little background information about that as well. Another resource that we have on the website is the different tribes that are located within the areas. So let's say that if I'm a parent and I wanted to find information about a certain tribe and had that conversation with my children, I can go to one of the links and it will provide information about the tribes. It would also talk a little bit about whether or not they're having a powwow. And it just gives more background information for, once again, parents, students, staff, or community members to find a little, find information about the different types of Native Americans that we have in the area. So once again, in this meeting that we had with the parents, we talked about the website. We talked about the curriculum that's being provided in the classroom. We talked about how can we help students become educated about themselves. The parents want the students to feel proud of who they are, to know who they are. And in order to do that, one of the conversations that took place was, how about having a gathering of some sort? Where the students can find out other students in the building or be able to monitor other students in a different building. So having a gathering, and that's our next step, is to invite the families to get together, just a social event, to talk about maybe the different tribes that they're a part of, if they have information about an event that's taken place. One of the families talked about how they make dream catchers. And they were willing to share that information with some others. So there were some topics about how we can spread this out a little bit more. And in doing this, the parents were in agreement with the resolution. And basically, they just, once again, want to make sure that students are proud of who they are. That was something that came up a lot in the meeting. And so with the resolution, there was a concurrence. And basically, there's no recommendation for the board. And there's no board action needed because the parents were satisfied with what was taking place in the district. Any questions for me?
Ken?
Okay, a couple of questions. Achievement gap, do they have, we, do we have any numbers on how Native Americans are doing versus the rest of the population?
We do. One of the things that we talked about in the meeting, first of all, was identifying the students. When we looked at the numbers, roughly around 41. Last year, we were close to 44. But we're looking at, and I was able to talk with the parents and with Prachi Merkety about the identification. Apparently, when some families register students, there's, you know, of course, you have, it could be Caucasian and it could be Native American. But what's registered in the system could be different. And so we're trying to clean that up first before we can actually look at the gap for the students. I know there's a small number for each site. But as far as the true numbers as to what the Native Americans are compared to some of the other students, we don't have all of that information because of the identification purposes.
Okay, and then, another? And then the parent-teacher advisory, I read through this as best I could. And does the panel that is, that you're working with, does that satisfy the needs for the 124D?
Yes, it does.
Yeah, Frida, I want to say I like that you walked us through the website and it looks like there's some wonderful things on there and I'm glad we're using our technology in that way. So thank you for that.
Thank you. That was one of the things that the parents were really excited about, is having quick access and being able to have those conversations with their children. Because one parent in particular mentioned that his son is part Ojibwe. And he wanted to be able to have conversations about that, but he didn't have the means to do that. So having this website and being able to sit with his son has given him an opportunity to have that conversation.
Great. All right, thank you very much. Appreciate it. All right, that brings us to the freight rail discussion, the next item on our agenda. Once again, the Honorable Mr. Rolf Peterson.
Well, as, as promised, I delivered a draft letter to Jim a couple of weeks ago. I suppose it was last weekend. And then two subsequent versions. I think you all received the latest version on the desk tonight. Basically, it has really just a couple of changes, a couple of formatting changes that Julie asked for. Made a little more sense out of the thing. And then we also added the paragraph, the second paragraph on page two about environmental justice, which would be different than what you had in your packet on Friday. And environmental justice, I talked to Jim about it last week. And it was brought to me by somebody who's been working on this. And it was actually mentioned in one of the listening sessions that Hennepin County had. Environmental justice is the fair distribution of benefits and burden. And the best, the best definition I heard-
Rolf, why don't we, let's get to the same-
Yeah, it's on page two, it's, we note that DEIS Chapter 10.
First full paragraph on page two.
Right, yeah, okay, the first full paragraph. So, and basically what we're asking for is that we, we're asking to have our school populations, you know, studied and then possible engagement. Environmental justice requires, it's policy of the federal government that any transportation project does not overly burden one group to the benefit of another group. And so what they, they look for minority and low-income populations that may be affected in that way. And we just feel that perhaps our school, high school, and Peter Hobart, and our school district as a whole certainly meets the qualification. They compare it to the Hennepin County average, which is 28.5% for the minority. And, you know, we're in the 30s, so. We felt that, Jim and I both felt that that was, it was worth having on, being on the record with regard to that. Other than that-
We weren't sure if we really are going to qualify as a school as opposed to a housing, but it preserved any rights, so we thought we'd just keep it.
Right, yeah, the actual terminology is minority population means any readily identifiable group or groups of minority persons who live in geographic proximity. And if circumstances warrant, geographically dispersed or transient persons, such as migrant workers or Native Americans, would be similar thing. And we feel that the high school could fit into that category as a geographically dispersed group of individuals, so. So other than that, that's really the only change from what you had in your packet. So if there are any other questions regarding the letter-
Joe?
So, Rolf, I was just curious and also hoping that what we've got lines up really well with what the city is saying. And I know they're, they're still working on it. So can you tell me how well this statement lines up with what you think they're coming up with? Or we already think we're pretty in line with them, or?
We are. We're really in line with them. Ours is a little more focused on the school district. But a lot of the mitigations that we're asking for are mitigations that are included in their master list, which they're passing along. I have attended all the city council meetings except for the one this evening. They were discussing really their final edits of their response to the DEIS. But no, it aligns really perfectly. I had forwarded, last Tuesday, I sent this to Kevin Locke, who is kind of the point person for the city. And he gave it a read-through. And then I also talked to him about the environmental justice. And he agreed that while we may not technically meet what it means, it certainly is a good thing to have on the record, so. But I have been working very closely with the city. And the mitigations are similar to the mitigations they are proposing. And obviously, they have a lot more that expand beyond the school district.
Thanks.
Julie?
I just want to thank you for drafting the letter because I think this, this does address the issues that we've got and some reasonable proposed mitigation and reflects what I think is our, but I know is my personal frustration in the continuing failure to address all these mitigation issues. And that's, I'm frustrated that that hasn't happened and maybe it finally will.
You know, I spent a whole Saturday working on this, probably eight or nine hours in my kitchen with two monitors on my laptop and everything. And my wife goes, "What have you been working on all day?" I said, "I wrote this, I wrote this letter." And she read it and she goes, "That took you all day." So it's, depending on the person, it's a lot of work, but anyway, so.
I remember my grandfather saying the same thing to me. "It takes you that long to write a letter?" One suggestion I have, and I think this is great work and I'm so glad you've done it for us, Rolf, and that you've really put the time into attending meetings and so thoroughly understand the nuances of this problem. I just wonder if we would like to, since some, our key points are in bold, I was thinking to put the phrase "environmental justice" in bold, since some of us struggled to find it even as you were telling us where it was. It might just jump that term of art out at them and make our point even further.
You know, we're in luck because while the original comment period was supposed to be end tomorrow, and all comments would have been in by 5:00 PM tomorrow, they actually extended it until the 31st of December. So I believe we can make that change and still get a signature on it, so. No, no, I think, I think, you know, they're, they're collecting them. Hennepin County's collecting all of them. And then at, you know, on January 1st or January 2nd, they just take the whole thing over and ship it over to, to the Met Council, who then takes ownership of it, so. I think as soon as this is ready to go, I think we send it in.
So you don't think that that change will take you another eight or nine hours?
What's that?
You don't think that change will take you another-
No, as a matter of fact, I'm sure Cindy will hammer it out in much less time.
All right, Rolf, again, thank you very much, much appreciated. And so then, then they come out of the EIS, right?
Over the next year, they'll work on the EIS. And the plan is, and then also preliminary engineering will start in January. And that's really where they'll look at the comments and the mitigations and things like that that people are asking for and see how they work into the plans of both, you know, co-location over in the Camelworth Corridor or the reroute, the relocation of the freight trains adjacent to us. And that, that decision will be based on that preliminary engineering. And that should be made probably about a year from now.
And can we recruit you for inspecting plans and talking with those who inspect plans?
Absolutely, I'll be there. So I attend the CAC meetings, the Community Advisory Committee meetings for you guys. And that's every month. And I get all this information and I'll be back for an update. And, you know, I think it's mentioned in there, but I really think that we should have Met Council come. And maybe this spring, you know, like in a, in a May timeframe and give an update and where they're at. Because, you know, six months from then, they're going to be coming to the city of St. Louis Park looking for community consent. And this is a big, this is, this is what moves the whole project forward. So I think it's important that we all be brought up to speed and find out what their plans are directly from them, so.
After this is signed, does it go to you or do you want it to be mailed to Hennepin County from the district?
I think if you PDF it up, you know, and just email it to, I can send, I'll send you the email address. But also copy me. And then I think we just copy emails for the CC list also. But I think the email way of a PDF is probably the best.
Thank you.
Rolf, thank you. All right. Next item is the final levy certification. Sandy?
I believe we can see it all. We did go through the truth in taxation hearing at 6:30, but this is just a reiteration of the proposed levy payable for 2013. And I'll go through some of the highlights once again for the viewing audience. And we do have a comparison in front of us for the payable 2012, which is the current year's levy. And for comparing to payable 2013, which is for next year's revenue source. And taking a look at some of the increases and decreases that happened, and I'm just going to go through the larger ones. And taking a look at some of the increases and decreases that happened, and I'm just going to go through the larger ones to highlight them. The operating referendum did increase slightly by 238,000. And this was mainly due to the increase in resident pupil units from our estimates. Since the levy is based upon estimates of resident pupil units, they do go to actials a few years later and provide the adjustments at that point, and we did have a slight increase. The other areas for the reemployment, last year for payable 2012, we actually had a prior year adjustment increase. This year, we had a prior year adjustment decrease. So, that shows the decrease that happened. The biggest area that shows a decrease was with the health and safety. We actually, when we levy for the health and safety levy, we levy for projects that we think are going to happen, but not always are they going to happen. So, the next year, they make up for and adjust for any projects that happen and take the revenue away. And that's basically what happened for payable 2013. And another area is the tax increment financing, which is an area that is neutral to us as far as revenue sources. But it's a mechanism to, for the taxpayers to get money back from the tax increment financing. And here's for the other funds, such as community education. And community education was pretty much stable from the prior year. There was a slight decrease in the school age care, which was, the school age care levy is based on actual expenditure spent. And it's an adjustment, I believe, this current year where we actually didn't spend as much in the prior year. The debt service levy, we actually had more of a debt service excess. And the reason for the debt service excess is we are able to not only levy for the principal and the interest, but we also are able to levy for 5% over that. And at some point, the state takes away that 5%, which accrues in the fund balance. And they get us to a level of taking that funding source away or back. So, looking at the grand total, we actually have a decrease for payable 2013 from the prior year of 877,612, which comes up to a negative 3.85% decrease in our overall proposed levy for payable 2013.
Great, any questions? All right, thank you, Sandy, appreciate it. Next item up is the superintendent evaluation, which we held via conference and phone conference and whatever this, earlier this evening. And Vice Chair Bruce Richardson has a report.
Each year, we do the superintendent's evaluation. It comes in three parts. Basically, the top part is higher level and it was the consensus of the board that she met those goals and objectives in that part and exceeded in many, many cases. The second part is specifically related to the strategic plan. And the superintendent met or exceeded all of those goals and objectives as part of that strategic plan in the opinion of the board. And then the third part asks three questions. What's working well? What would you like to see continued? And what would you like to see changed? And I'd just like to take a few of the excerpts from the first two parts of that. "We have a great school district and in general, our teams and especially the leadership of Dr. Bowers keeps it that way. The finances are in great shape, the community is involved and engaged, great leaders are being produced at all levels. Almost everything we are doing is aimed at increasing achievement and reaching more students. That is the main thrust of our mission." And then from "What would you like to see continued?", "Dr. Bowers has been very effective at getting buy-in on our strategic plan with the entire community. Strong fiscal management, making our K-5 and middle schools full-fledged IB schools. And we need to complete the work at the middle school and as we saw in the report tonight, that's an ongoing process. So, we want to express our appreciation to the superintendent for her wonderful work in the district and we're pleased to kick off another year."
Excellent, all right, great. Let's move it on to the consent agenda. For a note, we have a couple retirements that maybe we'll just have a few words on. Sarah Kreswick, I know, and the volunteer coordinator, 32 and a half years. Do you want to say a word or two, Lisa?
Yeah, Sarah has been here, like you said, 32 years with, I think, like one six-month leave that she had like a while back. And she's also been working with the city, I think it's been like the last 15 or 16 years. So, she has served us very, very, very well and we are going to miss her a lot. And even, she was even mentioned here tonight. And so, she will definitely be missed by lots of people in the district.
Great. And then we have a few teachers, Barb Davinsky, who was here the other night and being honored during our celebration of our National Merit Scholars, and Lynn Reiner, and Susan Peterson. Do we want to have someone say a word about them? I guess, oh, Joe, go for it.
I'll say something even though I don't know these people fully, but I just want to say something about something that happened at work last week. Someone came up to me in the coffee room and said, "You're on the St. Louis Park School Board, aren't you?" And I'm like, "Yes." And she used to live in St. Louis Park and one of her kids graduated here and then they moved and the second kid graduated somewhere else. And she said, "Well, my first kid graduated from St. Louis Park and he had Ms. Davinsky, I heard she's retiring. I just wanted to tell you that my son took a biology class from her in high school. And the next biology class that he took was in graduate school at Stanford. He said he never studied, this is not advice to the students. He never studied in that, in that class and used what he, what he took from Ms. Davinsky from high school and he got an A in the course." So, he, she was just effusive in her praise of what she did for her son and over all these, all these years, so.
Great, very nice, good story. So, we thank them for, oh, Bruce?
For Lynn Reiner, I just want to say, as an art teacher extraordinaire, to see the work those kids produced. And one of the things Lynn taught me, and it's the reason I push art the way I do in the district, is she showed from grade level to grade level, when you teach them in elementary school, it's something that will stay with them all their lives. And I think Lynn was a great advocate for the arts in St. Louis Park and we're going to miss her.
Great, well, congratulations and thanks for all the good work. I should just say Barb Davinsky had 25-plus years of service and Lynn Reiner had 22-plus and Susan Peterson was 13-plus. So, we thank them. With that, I would entertain a motion to approve this evening's consent agenda.
Second.
Moved by Nancy, seconded by Julie, all those in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, that passes 7-0. Next item is the action agenda, the final levy certification approval, which we just heard. It is recommended that the board approve the payable 2013 levy certification in the amount of $21,934,639.52 as presented.
So moved.
Moved by Julie.
Second.
Seconded by Bruce, any comments, questions? All those in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, that passes 7-0. The international student travel approval, this is long ago yet this evening, our first item under discussions for the orchestra trip. It is recommended that the board approve this spring, 2014, they're way ahead of the game, international travel for the high school orchestra as presented. Is there a motion? Moved by Nancy. Seconded by Joe, comments, questions? All those in favor, say aye. Aye, that passes 7-0. Oh, I guess I should ask, opposed? Okay, now it passes 7-0. Next item, for the board support, I guess the approval of the letter presented by Rolf this evening with Nancy's one recommended change. It is recommended the board support the letter for the freight rail desired mitigation as presented with the noted change. Is there a motion? Moved by Larry. Seconded by Julie, any comments? We're all good with that letter, we're on board, all right, unanimous is nice, okay. All those in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, that passes 7-0. And we'll sign and get that out in time, Rolf will assure that that occurs. He mentioned potentially hand-delivering it even. We won't make you do that. Okay, next item, community education advisory council member appointment approval. It is recommended that the board approve the appointments of Anita Bilden and Nicholas Jacobs, familiar name, to the Community Education Advisory Council, terms expiring 2014 as presented.
Yes, Anita Bilden is a patient care coordinator for Park Nicollet. And we have like sectors that we like to fill in CAC, so she fills our healthcare sector. So, we're really thrilled because we haven't had anybody filling that sector for quite a while. And then Nick Jacobs is an employee here, I believe he works at the high school and he's a graduate student. I'm sorry, where? I'm sorry, he works at Aquila, I think he did work at the high school, but he works at Aquila and I'll thank you, Tammy. He's also a graduate student and is very interested in community education. And you said his name was familiar and that is because he is the mayor's son, so. But we're thrilled to have him on CAC as well.
And I might add Nick Jacobs is a Park grad. We claim our own.
We love our Park grads. All right, so we have a recommendation. Okay, is there a motion? Moved, moved by Nancy, seconded by Larry. All right, thank you to those for their application and willingness to serve on our behalf. All those in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, that passes 7-0. The American Indian Resolution approval. It is recommended the board approve the American Indian Committee Resolution as presented this evening by Frida Bailey. Is there a motion? Moved by Ken, seconded by Bruce, comments, questions? All right, all those in favor, say aye, oops. Aye, opposed, that passes 7-0. Next item, approval for Third Amendment for the Elliott Purchase Agreement. It is recommended the board approve the Third Amendment to the Purchase Agreement for Elliott as presented. Just a note on that, timing under the Purchase Agreement for Elliott has become, well, let's just say with the work we're doing at the city and the way the city requires sequential applications, meaning they went for the comp guide plan change, then they'll have to go back for the zoning change and then also the TIF approval and any other requirements. They don't do them at the cities, as many cities do contemporaneously. So, we look forward to, I think, December 17th. Hopefully, the council will approve a guide plan request. And what happened then, that didn't fit with our existing timeline frame under the Purchase Agreement as previously amended. So, the request has come in for a further extension of time, both to get the final applications in, which had been November 30th, and that was pushed back 60 days to give ample time for that to occur. And it also extends the municipal approval period 60 days, which ran 200 days from the 60-day window for, it's getting late, sorry. So, they had 260 days, yes, they had 260 days from the execution of the agreement to get their approvals and waive their contingencies. They've asked for an extension on the municipal approval period, given that they haven't been able to make approval yet. So, could I, I would entertain a motion for approval of the Third Amendment to the Elliott Purchase Agreement. Moved by Larry, seconded by Joe, all those, any comments, questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, that passes 7-0. Bringing us to item eight, communications and transmittals. Bruce?
The PSI Folk Dance Group is performing. The, each semester, the students, from 73 students in grades two to five, they've practiced for 10 weeks to put these folk dances together. They'll perform on Wednesday, December 12th, from 1:15 to 2:30 in the gym at Central. And then Friday, December 14th, at 7:00 PM at the senior high auditorium. And that's the PSI Folk Dance Group.
Other communications and transmittals, Joe?
So, I think a lot of people have heard the phrase fiscal cliff about 5 million times over the past few months. And I just wanted to mention to the viewing public that the possibility of hitting the fiscal cliff not only has implications on your taxes and all that, but it has, if they don't come to an agreement, sequestration cuts would occur and so those would be across-the-board cuts. And so, that would affect our school district mainly through Title I funds and special ed funds, the federal funds that we receive. And I think, you know, Sandy calculated for us, 8.2% sequestration cut would be about $135,000 to us. So, I'd encourage all of you to contact Congressman Ellison and any other congressman and tell them to get their acts together and make sure this doesn't happen.
All right, others?
I had the opportunity to go to the junior high play this weekend and the kids did a fantastic job. It was very entertaining. And also in January 12th, Aquila will be doing their Aquila Bees. It's their fourth annual pancake breakfast held at the Aquila. So, it's going to be a fantastic time. I'm sure you guys will all receive tickets again, so go to it.
All right, thanks, any others? All right, oh, Sandy?
Just to remind the public that our next meeting is, I believe, January 14th. And it's been a pleasure serving with you as chair this year, Jim.
Thank you very much. And that reminds me, we should set up some, well, next year, I guess we'll do that. We'll set some dates for further listening sessions, so we'll kick that over. All right, if that is it, I would entertain a motion for adjournment. Moved by Bruce, seconded by Julie, all those in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, that passes 7-0, we're adjourned.